...request for C4 that was absolutely totally consistent with both land use plan and with the zoning code.
I know we have a gentleman that would like to address the audit, so not Mr. Don Harris?
I know this is like three lots, or all three lots, or is that combined? All three were C3? Okay, I wanted to clarify that. All right. By doing this rezoning, and part of this problem, I think, is because of the highway department, the way they put that exit so close in front of U-Haul. The people on Palhatton Drive, and this was brought up also last time that there's been a death on Palhatton Drive. They need their own privacy, they're in having a residential area. All that is residential. They call this in consideration. And also, prior, in Planning Commission meetings, they had denied another storage facility expansion because we've already got 800 more units going on in up here on 107. There's going to be an over-expansion. U-Haul stated last time, this will not increase traffic. Anne stood up here and said that. If they build more units, I have not seen any plans yet, nothing has been filed, last time I looked, over a week and a half ago. They're going to put more units in there, they're going to put more trucks in there. How can their business not increase and traffic not increase? So, I ask that even in spite of what you said, when you said, it's not be allowed for the safety of the residents of Palhatton Drive, and to keep the businesses in operation, storage facility businesses, that are currently in operation and have been for many years. Why should we suffer if there's over-expansion? Somebody's fault. It's only been so far. I ask that just for the time. You know, and like I said, the highway department is part of this also, the problem. They've got it, and made it one way down through there, across the freeway from Mayflower, RV, north, but they've got it two ways. It's come up to where Lander's Road cuts back to Rixey Road from there, south, one way. So, it's rather convoluted from multiple aspects because of this aspect.
May I could ask a question of Bob, real quick? Uh, Mr. Middleton?
Hold on.
Thank you. Um, when we look at zoning, I just remember Charlie always saying, when we look at zoning, we can't look at the business. We have to look at the land and whether it's appropriate for that zoning or not. Is that indeed the case, where we can't go, well, we don't like that C4 business, so therefore we're not going to grant a C4 when C4 is...
The fundamental question is, is this proposed zoning action consistent with the plan? That's item number one. Now, item number two, that you would ask ourselves, and if the Planning Commission asks ourselves, is would the uses that are permitted in this zone be appropriate in this location? And the answer, and I go back to the original zoning code, that said, C4 is best deployed along 67 and at an intersection with 161. So, that was the basis for our decision. It is consistent with the plan and with the zoning code. I guess I would take a little exception on the use of Palhatton Drive, the short segment of it, yes, it serves multifamily residential units. But fundamentally, it was extended all the way to Warden Road in order to serve all the commercial uses that are north of the present site. So, it's fundamentally a carrier or collector for commercial uses that could not be served any other way.
What are the legalities to, asking this of you, Mr. Cobb, in terms of, I'm just thinking back to previous issues that we have had and so forth, that are we putting ourselves in a legally risky situation if everything we have, based upon the Planning Commission and so forth, saying, okay, this is what your land use plan says, all this stuff, and we're still not going to give you that zoning, even though this is what we say? Are we putting ourselves in a legal jeopardy situation by denying a zoning that's, they're all saying is appropriate and consistent with all of the documentation and so forth?
So long as whatever you do is deemed a proper legislative action, then that doesn't place the chamber, or rather, I'm sorry, the council in jeopardy. Not to say that someone might not file an action to seek some type of injunctive relief if it's contrary to what they wanted with respect to the zoning. But so long as you follow consistently what Mr. Middleton is saying, that's the appropriate approach. It's not what business is going in there, you say, is that zoning type, that type of zoning appropriate for that location? And then you look at all the uses, and you see if any of those, all of those uses fall that are a C4, you find those to be appropriate for that location, then you've met your criteria.
And the one thing that the Planning Commission really does look at is whether this is, whether you have an overabundance of supply of any one particular kind of business. We can't make that call. I mean, I told, I think it was in my second meeting on the Planning Commission, when somebody made that argument, I said, this is America, where we are free to make our own error and fail. We don't know the answer to that question. Our only concern is, is this appropriate at this location, and is it consistent with the plan?
Sir, I'm sorry, I can't give you legal advice. I advise the council.
So, just a question here, and I look at this, and I see in the ordinance, the lots are labeled 3, 4, and 5, assuming that that 3, 4, and 5 is going from west to east on the zoning map that's here in front of me. It looks like that plot to the farthest east is the only one that has any 67, 167 frontage, and it's a pretty small amount. And the property that they're already on is Zone Z, C3, I mean, the same as lots 3, 4, and 5. What's the difference? I mean...
My understanding that once the zoning is approved, they intend to replat the three lots into a single one.
I think they said that last month.
Is it correct, though, didn't last month, we decide they wanted their entire property to be rezoned C4, even their existing?
No.
That's going to remain C3?
Just these three lots.
Oh, my question is, what's the difference, then, to do this C4 and leave the remaining C3?
Outside storage. Because those were grandfathered in.
Were they grandfathered in?
When we changed the zoning classifications, that was all grandfathered in. But now, C4 has to, if it's a storage units, they have to be C4. So, if they want to build more storage units on those three lots, then there's no choice but to do C4. And whether we like it or not, because we do have a lot of storage units, it's, as I've said, it's not our decision, or we're not God. We can't tell someone what they can and cannot build, and a lot of people don't realize that, that we zone according to the appropriateness of the area, not, we don't tell people what to build there. We turn down a lot of C4 elsewhere because we say 67, 167 is primarily our corridor for C4.
And that's why I feel like legally, if that's what we have been saying, and that's, we have to be consistent.
But, Mayor, we don't have, is there any access at all from 67, or you must turn in at that sharp turn?
The only way to get north of the Safeco Station is to go around Palhatton.
See, and to me, that's not consistent. I mean, that's, it has nothing to do with 67. It's a visible thing for advertising, but it's not easy access from the freeway.
But if you're already in their property, you can access their property, I believe, you don't have to be on 67, 167, correct? There's entrance right there on Warden Road?
Yes. So, you can come that way, I believe, without...
I guess we have to be careful about how we interpret that. I don't know when the original ordinance was drafted, at the time it was drafted, who knows? You may have been able to get directly to 67, 167. The truth of the matter is, there's only two, three places where you can get off 67, 167 and access anything. So, anything that's on that access road, as far as I'm concerned, is 167, 167.
Yeah, that's true.
This is also adding to existing business, too. So, we do promote business expansion. Well, and when we get to the, I guess, when they, before the site plan, we could maybe do some restrictions on ingress and egress off Palhatton. That's my, that would be my request.
They already have an egress and egress on, if they want to utilize it.
Yeah.
Yeah, they do. I'll put them back together.
Because I did drive there today and just look again, but I would ask that when we do that, that their ingress and egress would be restricted off Palhatton, any new ingress or egress. Or deny people use of their property.
So, Steve, we read this for the second time tonight, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is there any reason that we have to read it for a third time tonight?
No, you can pass it to the, just leave it to the second reading and go to the next agenda.
It's a pleasure of the council.
Kevin, what would be your reason for passing it? Can I ask you that?
Just don't read it again. It just goes to the next...
Yeah, I understand that, yeah. I mean...
You're asking why Kevin wants to pass it to another reading.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
No?
You just don't do it.
I didn't understand.
Okay. Kevin, I think he's asking you.
Oh, I'm sorry. So, I'm sorry.
That's all right, Kevin. I was just misunderstanding and wanting to know, is there a reason not to read it the third time, personally?
Well, I mean, you know, we've been, as a council, we've been accused of running through things awfully fast and not getting the full benefit of the three readings, you know, for public input and what have you. And unless there's a pressing need to, you know, read this a third time, then, I mean, I say we let it go to the next meeting. I mean, that, again, that's just my opinion in the For What It's Worth column.
I don't have a problem with that.
I can support that.
Okay, so there's not a motion to go to the third reading? Okay. It will go to next month for the third reading. An ordinance amending the official zoning district map and for other purposes is as in respect to 124 Heritage Lane.
This is a proposed location for a new Holiday Inn Express. The current zoning is C2, which doesn't permit hotels and motels. It would be right next to property that is in fact a Zone C3. It is consistent with the current land use plan, which proposes basically a commercial strip development. With the proposed land use plan, it would also be consistent, because that would be the commercial center, which this, so it would be consistent with the zoning, with the proposed land use plan, recommended option.
All right, maybe we suspend the rules and place it on the second reading?
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
Brooks.
Aye.
Broderick.
Aye.
Sanders.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Lilly.
Aye.
McMen.
Aye.
An ordinance amending the official zoning district map and for other purposes regarding 124 Heritage Lane, second reading.
I believe we suspend the rules, place it on the third and final reading.
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
Brooks.
Aye.
Broderick.
Aye.
Sanders.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Lilly.
Aye.
McMen.
Aye.
An ordinance amending the official zoning map and for other purposes concerning 124 Heritage Lane, third reading in the ordinance.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
Brooks.
Aye.
Broderick.
Aye.
Sanders.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Lilly.
Aye.
McMen.
Aye.
Senior Citizen Committee?
Mayor, we did not have a meeting. Our next meeting is in October.
Sherwood Wastewater Treatment Committee? Street Committee?
The Street Committee did meet. The draft minutes are in your packets. Again, never assured anything to talk about. We do have substantial activity going on with our road design and starting, hopefully soon to be moving into construction on 1. Yeah, so I'll leave it at that. Anyone have any questions?
I've just got one, Kevin. On the Coles extension, and I understand Richard's not here, so you may not know this or not, are we, it look like we are aligning that road with cherry wood, so it doesn't make a little crooked, is that right? So, it'll be straightened up, do we know?
So, yeah, the property there that we needed to put that extension through, Mr. Landry offered to donate that if we stayed next to the apartment complex there, as opposed to having to go through, you know, and get, oh, what's the right term? Probably end up, as Mr. Landry said, and I don't want to put words in his mouth, if you don't want it donated, and you want to make that little jog over, then we'll see you in court. You know, so the option was to, you know, move forward with the property along the property line of the apartment complex, and then add the roundabout into the master street plan for, you know, when that property is developed there to the south side of that Coles extension, then when they develop that, the roundabout will be a part of that development for that property.
The one thing I'm worried about, or concerned about with that, is I do think there's going to have to be some type of traffic control because of school traffic versus rush hour type of traffic in terms of, you know, mediating with all that, and the fact that we, there's not going to now be the roundabout in terms of keeping the traffic moving. I think we're going to need a turn lane over there, and it look like, from the drawings that I saw, that it was just that there wasn't room for the turn lane. I don't want us to end up creating another traffic problem by us trying to relieve a traffic problem. So, you know, if you could just take that, you know, back and just kind of question that, and just, you know, we showed the public that we were going to put a roundabout in there that would have, you know, kept that traffic moving and so forth in there, and that was, you know, something that we presented, you know, at everything. Now, of course, we did say, you know, these aren't absolutes and so forth on that, but I do think, you know, as much as we can, keeping with it, and I understand there's, you know, condemnation type of things and so forth, but I just know we're having unbelievably bad traffic problems on Rockington. It's now backing up in the mornings almost to Maryland. So, these things will, of course, help, and I really do think they're going to be used. And I actually went down Landry and was surprised how it's already backed up, and this was not by anything that was school traffic. So, if you could just take that back with Richard, and let's just really make sure that we're not...
Sure. No, we'll definitely look at it. You know, I know the roundabout was something that I had really looked forward to. I mean, at the end of the day, we have to be responsible with the taxpayers' money. Free is always better than not free and time in court. So, you know, that's the path that the city has chosen to go, and then what was recommended. So, I mean, that's where we are, but we will certainly look at the possibility of a turn lane. I think that's probably a good idea.
Thank you.
Kevin, I'd like to just interject, too, on that, Mary Jo's benefit. School traffic is usually out of there by 4:00 to 4:15 coming down to Clinton. The major traffic coming off the roundabout, or coming off the loop, I'm sorry, coming off the loop and getting onto the road behind Coles, is going to be 4:30, 5 o'clock is traffic that really gets bad. So, I think we're going to be avoiding the school traffic.
Yeah, I was thinking more morning, as people, as people are going to, because they're already doing it now, because when you're coming down, you're going to have people who are going to try to avoid Rockington as much as possible, take a right, and then head over that way.
I think these things have probably been discussed at Street Committee extensively. I know we have three council members on the Street Committee, so...
Kevin, Kevin in front of us.
I just have questions. So, the overlays, the list that we have, right, I mean, we have, we're working off a list right now. Is there a list for the next set of overlays? Brian, I guess that's you?
Yeah, I'm going to let Brian speak to overlays. I know we've started, we do not have a 2020...
Okay. There will be some, though. Will you get those? Could you pass those on to all of us, so that when people call up about them, then we can let them know that the actual list for next year? Thank you. Thanks, Brian, and Kevin.
An ordinance approving the detachment of lands from the City of Sherwood to be annexed into the City of Jacksonville and for other purposes, first reading.
We did have a public hearing at 5:30. Can you, if you mind, just reenterating the process for the benefit of those?
Sure. This council, I'm sorry, the Jacksonville City Council passed an ordinance back in August, I'm sorry, I don't have the number in front of me, wherein they voted to annex five separate tracks currently located within the City of Sherwood into the City of Jacksonville.
It's during the ordinance, summer's 15-2019.
Thank you. Statute for simultaneous annexation and detachment calls for a public hearing in municipality from which the property will be detached. That occurred today at 5:30. And then, if this ordinance passes, then I will pass that to Jacksonville, and then they'll complete their process, and we will likewise be getting an ordinance from them that's very similar to the one that's in front of us, that approves the detachment of the two parcels in Jacksonville that will become property in Sherwood.
The process, it's going to be positive, I believe, for both cities.
I believe we suspend the rules, place it on the second reading.
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
Brooks.
Aye.
Broderick.
Aye.
Sanders.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Lilly.
Aye.
McMen.
Aye.
An ordinance approving the detachment of lands from the City of Sherwood to be annexed into the City of Jacksonville and for other purposes, second reading.
Need to suspend the rules and put on the final reading?
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
Brooks.
Aye.
Broderick.
Aye.
Sanders.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Lilly.
Aye.
McMen.
An ordinance approving the detachment of lands from the City of Sherwood to be annexed into the City of Jacksonville and for other purposes, that is the third reading.
Move for the adoption of the ordinance.
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
Brooks.
Aye.
Broderick.
Aye.
Sanders.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Lilly.
Aye.
McMen.
Aye.
An ordinance amending ordinance number 1952 to include regulating the parking of vehicles on all city right-of-way, first reading.
Just to bring this to the council member's attention, a resident in Ward 3 contacted me and Councilman Brooks to go and look at their property. As you all know, if the city has a right-of-way on both sides of the street, the side of the street that you have a sidewalk on, people don't park on the sidewalks against an ordinance, one of our codes, to be parking on that sidewalk. But on the opposite side of the street, where the sidewalk doesn't exist, there are individuals parking not on the street, but in their front yard, parallel to the street, and they're at the peak of a hill. So, the resident, the neighbors that are trying to back out cannot see down the hill to see what's happening because of the blocked vehicles. Now, if the sidewalk was on that street, it'd be a violation by the sidewalk not being on the street, it's not a violation. This is to clear that up. It doesn't matter which, where the sidewalk is, it's the city's right-of-way. So, I think the resident who brought this to our attention also had some good thoughts, worked with Mr. Cobb, and this is the ordinance before you today. It's very much a safety issue for people who are at top of the hill, apex of the hill, backing out when people are doing that.
I've got a couple of questions and concerns about this. In my ward, for example, I have areas that don't have curbs and gutters, that don't have streets that are standard width, and if they're going to have a visitor, it's common practice in the state of Arkansas and throughout the South, that on narrow streets, you go two in the grass, two on the street, so that you don't obstruct the whole street. And by this ordinance, this would become unlawful, and we have things in it, you know, where you've got, you know, designated driveways. Well, are those going to be permitted? Are they going to be certified as to what are the designated driveways, and what are not the designated driveways? Are we going to need to involve, you know, our mapping system on that? I just, our current ordinance says you're not allowed to obstruct, and so I don't understand why this particular situation isn't being taken care of on its own. If it's, if somebody is causing a safety issue on a street, that should be a taking care of through our law enforcement. And if it were neighborhoods where they were curbed and gutted, I totally would get that. But we've got, we've got lots of areas in our city where I don't think this would be very fair, and I wonder if it could be maybe rewritten, so that, you know, so that, like, if it's a neighborhood with curb and guttering, it would apply, and if it's not a neighborhood with curb and guttering?
Let me make sure that you understand one thing. I understand the two wheels on and off. This is 100% all four wheels in the front yard.
Right.
On the streets.
But that's not what this says, though.
It said park, it doesn't say butted up against.
But, why?
It didn't say you couldn't have a wheel on the sidewalk. I mean, someone's going to be allowed to be parked in the street, possibly.
Well, that's not what it says, Beverly.
Yeah, it does.
No, it says that you're not allowed to park in an unpaved area of a right-of-way. That's two wheels, that's that whole front area of somebody's car.
That's not the intent. The intent is that having 100%, and that's parked, it's 100% that parked in it.
And understand that that's, and that's why I'm saying, perhaps this could be reworked, because that's not, though, what this says.
Well, we're reading it one time tonight, you can work with Mr. Cobb and fix it.
Well, I can't, I can't pass this as, I can't personally vote to pass this as it is, knowing that we have so many areas of the city where this would hurt the residents. I couldn't, I couldn't do that, and so what I'm asking...
We welcome your suggestions for the second reading.
So, what I am saying is that when we have areas that are not curbed and gutted, and not standard streets...
One, I'm fine with one reading, but I do not want, if someone has suggestions on how to improve this, it is a definite hazard in what we saw on those hills. If you have suggestions, contact myself, preferably Mr. Cobb, to get these edits into the motion. Sounds great, thank you.
So, I've got, you know, just one thing, too. I mean, while we're having a conversation about it, I mean, section three, how do we, how do we know what streets and sidewalks are designated? I mean, what does that tell me? What am I hearing there? What am I reading here? It says, except for designated streets, sidewalks, drainage features, designated driveways, and approved parking areas, it shall be unlawful to pave city right-of-way. What driveways are designated?
What this is saying is that you cannot pave on top of the right-of-way.
But all of our driveways are paved on top of the right-of-way.
Except for the driveways. In other words, you couldn't, in other words, someone said, okay, I've got my driveway going in my house, I'm going to pave the next... going in my house, I'm going to pave the next 10 feet from the street so that I'll have a, a parking pad in my front yard.
Don't duplexes do that? Can we allow that?
So, welcome your input. The safety issue was brought by the resident. I totally respected the resident, saw it firsthand, and we need to do something about the hills and the people parking that area.
So I, I don't disagree with that, Councilmember Williams. I, I, I do think potentially there, there are other ways to deal with that from a, from a police department perspective that, that don't include putting an ordinance out there that, that affects the entire city and, and areas that, that potentially could and would be impacted by this, that, that are not impacted by, by hills and, and parked cars in yards. I mean, so I, I, I don't know what the solution is right off the top of my head, but, but it just does concern me a little bit.
It feels like an over, an overreach, and it just seems like this could be done through signage perhaps versus a blanket across the city.
Okay. Welcome your input for the third time again. Get the input to her.
An ord, an ordinance authorizing business to be conducted between the city of Sherwood and an elected official spouse concerning the repair of a section of sidewalk on Willow Glen Circle and for other purposes, first reading.
Move for the suspension of the rules and place them second reading.
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
Brooks.
Stane.
Broderick.
Aye.
Sanders.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Lilly.
Aye.
McMen.
Aye.
An ordinance authorizing business to be conducted between the city of Sherwood, Arkansas, and an elected official spouse concerning the repair of a section of sidewalk on Willow Glen Circle, second reading.
May we suspend the rules and put on third reading?
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
Brooks.
Stane.
Broderick.
Aye.
Sanders.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Lilly.
Aye.
McMen.
Aye.
An ordinance authorizing business to be conducted between the city of Sherwood, Arkansas, and an elected official spouse concerning the repair of a section of sidewalk on Willow Glen Circle, third reading.
Move for the adoption. Second.
Aye.
Aye.
Brooks.
Stane.
Broderick.
Aye.
Sanders.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Lilly.
Aye.
McMen.
Aye.
An ordinance certifying to the Pulaski County Clerk the rate of taxation to be levied by the city of Sherwood, Arkansas on the taxable real and personal property for tax year 2019, declaring an emergency and for other purposes, first reading.
May we suspend the rules and place them on second reading?
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
Brooks.
Aye.
Broderick.
Aye.
Sanders.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Lilly.
Aye.
McMen.
Aye.
An ordinance certifying to the Pulaski County Clerk the rate of taxation to be levied by the city of Sherwood, Arkansas on the taxable real and personal property for tax year 2019, declaring an emergency and for other purposes, that is the second reading.
Move suspend the rules and place them on a third and final reading.
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
Brooks.
Aye.
Broderick.
Aye.
Sanders.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Lilly.
Aye.
McMen.
Aye.
An ordinance certifying to the Pulaski County Clerk the rate of taxation to be levied by the city of Sherwood, Arkansas on the taxable real and personal property for tax year 2019, declaring an emergency and for other purposes, third reading.
Move for the adoption.
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
Brooks.
Aye.
Broderick.
Aye.
Sanders.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Lilly.
Aye.
McMen.
Aye.
There is an emergency clause.
Aye.
Aye.
Brooks.
Aye.
Broderick.
Aye.
Sanders.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Lilly.
Aye.
McMen.
Aye.
An ordinance authorizing business to be conducted between the city of Sherwood and a municipal employee concerning Sherwood Fest, declaring an emergency and for other purposes, first reading.
Is this, is this like beyond, I'm assuming, normal job description of Tommy Smith?
It is, and Darren Austin is here to answer any questions. But yes, it is, it's not his usual job description. This is what he does part-time on the weekends. He's a DJ for Power 92. He's a DJ for Power 92.
And he won't be, this is going to be above being what he normally does. He's not going to be on the clock at that.
Correct. Everything he'll do during Sherwood Fest will be as a professional DJ and MC. Will have nothing to do with his normal routine job.
Is that the reason that you chose to go with a contract versus having him do the job and doing it like overtime? Because I know he works for Parks and Recs and is a delightful young man, so I just, I don't know why you did that way versus the other way.
Well, we decided to do it that way, partly because we've had a professional MC for the past two or three years, and maybe more years than that. And that professional MC could not fulfill an obligation this year. And so we looked around, a staff member looked around, asked a few others, and they already had obligations and things. So we decided we'd take a look at, at our own staff and see if he could do it. He was available.
He's not technically a professional MC, the one he's, he just kind of does it on site, or?
But he's MC, not a professional, but yes, DJ, yes, professional.
Any other questions? May we suspend the rules and place them on second reading?
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
Brooks.
Aye.
Broderick.
Aye.
Sanders.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Lilly.
Aye.
McMen.
Aye.
An ordinance authorizing business to be conducted between the city of Sherwood and a municipal employee concerning Sherwood Fest, declaring an emergency and for other purposes, second reading.
May we suspend the rules and place them on third reading?
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
Brooks.
Aye.
Broderick.
Aye.
Sanders.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Lilly.
Aye.
McMen.
Aye.
An ordinance authorizing business to be conducted between the city of Sherwood and a municipal employee concerning Sherwood Fest, declaring an emergency and for other purposes, that is the third reading.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
Brooks.
Aye.
Broderick.
Aye.
Sanders.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Lilly.
Aye.
McMen.
Aye.
There is an emergency clause.
Aye.
Aye.
Brooks.
Aye.
Broderick.
Aye.
Sanders.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Lilly.
Aye.
McMen.
Aye.
There is an emergency clause.
Aye.
Aye.
Brooks.
Aye.
Broderick.
Aye.
Sanders.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Lilly.
Aye.
McMen.
Aye.
There is an emergency clause.
Aye.
Aye.
Brooks.
Aye.
Broderick.
Aye.
Sanders.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Lilly.
Aye.
McMen.
Aye.
An ordinance to authorize the expenditure of 2018 street bonds for the construction of street improvements on Coles Road, authorizing entering into a contract, declaring an emergency and for other purposes, first reading.
I move to suspend the rules and place them on the second reading.
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
Brooks.
Aye.
Broderick.
Aye.
Sanders.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Lilly.
Aye.
McMen.
Aye.
An ordinance to authorize the expenditure of 2018 street bonds for the construction of street improvements on Coles Road, authorizing entering into a contract, declaring an emergency and for other purposes, second reading.
May we suspend the rules and place them on third reading?
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
Brooks.
Aye.
Broderick.
Aye.
Sanders.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Lilly.
Aye.
McMen.
Aye.
An ordinance to authorize the expenditure of 2018 street bonds for the construction of street improvements on Coles Road, authorizing entering into a contract, declaring an emergency and for other purposes, that is the third reading.
Move for the adoption.
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
Brooks.
Aye.
Broderick.
Aye.
Sanders.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Lilly.
Aye.
McMen.
Aye.
Mayor, that is the agenda.
Next time on the agenda is all the business. I just have a question, because I was contacted by somebody over the weekend about signage. Are we doing anything with the sign ordinance that we were working on several years ago? Is there anything, are we going to try to? I mean, we were kind of at standstill because of the case in Arizona. So I'm, I'm looking at you, Mr. Cobb, because, and you are too, I know, but because of the case, and this person said, are we just not enforcing sign ordinance right now? And I said, we're working on a new one, but we have been trying to work on one for years.
There was a committee, as you may recall, that we, we had gone quite a bit in, in depth on that, and then that case came down. And so things did kind of come to a grinding halt. And the municipal league has advanced a, what they consider to be an acceptable version of, of sign ordinance suggestions. And I had circulated that. Mr. Middleton, I think I sent, did I send that to you, Rob, to look at? And it's, it's in process. We're just trying to get that zoning code, get that done, and we, we had some big projects in front of us. It's, it's coming, it's just not ready for the council, or ready to bring to the council.
Okay, I just want to see if we were working on it.
No, it's, it's in process, it is.
And I've got one other thing, too. I know that around the city, we, we do have some dilapidated properties that would be considered dangerous. And it's been some time since we've had, for a while there, it seemed like we were getting properties on a pretty regular basis that were being brought before us, action was being taken place on them, and so forth. And it just seems like we just haven't had anything at all in quite some time, and, you know, it helps everybody's property values when things were done about these dilapidated, unlivable properties.
I have a good answer for that. Our code enforcement does a very good job of working with residents to rehab. And we just had a burnout that we have authorized and been approved by the insurance company because it was, there was some investigation. But we've tried to rehab when we can.
Sure.
But as far as I know, we don't have any sitting out there that is in the, that is already condemned, that needs to be torn down, or that is to that point. Because we have quite an extensive legality process that we have to follow, and they spend a lot of time in court. I mean, they spend a lot of time in court working to get these properties rehabbed, and they're, they're very successful with it. We have had a lot torn down in the past, but I think we've done a very good job staying on top of them.
Well, I mean, you know, for example, there is a trailer park that is just in an absolutely abysmal condition out there. And from what I understand, there's people sleeping underneath trailers and, and so forth, so.
I'm not sure exactly where you're referring to, but I would, I would be willing to pretty much support that if you brought it to the code enforcement's attention, there's already something underway, and you can probably attest the times that they're in court with all the home parks and different things.
I, I will say that sometimes if you, if you see a property like that, just send that address to code enforcement, and we get a response back. I know, you know, when people call us in our area, we do that, and we get a response back even this week from some code enforcement. But maybe not the answers we always want, and maybe not as fast as we want, but we do get responses.
I have something on old business, a history thing. I don't know if that's old business. Let's get through the new business, get down announcements, okay? Any new business anymore? Okay. In a way of announcements, I believe Beverly has that announcement.
I have an announcement. We were charged about two months ago by the mayor when we redid the old library on Sherwood Avenue to make it a historical museum. And in that charge, I kept thinking, well, I've got some old stuff, I'm sure, don't, no council member needs to say my age or how old I am. Okay, damn, help me here. So I purged the closet, and I, you have to hear this story, and I purged the closet and found a trophy in there from 1988, when the Sherwood Sharks swim team won the entire match, the meet of champions, and it was against like eight different teams. It was the North La Rock Y, Stone Wall, Stone Hill, Stone Wall in Jacksonville, La Rock Air Force Base, Otter Creek, Maumell, Overbrook in Lakewood. And in 1979 is when the Sherwood Sharks began. So I just, knowing that, I thought, well, gosh, I don't remember this happening. So I opened up my son, who is now 43, scrapbook that's still at my house, and found the picture And in 1979 is when the Sherwood Sharks began. So I just, knowing that, I thought, well, gosh, I remember this happening. So I opened up my son, who is now 43, scrapbook that's still at my house, and found the picture of the original Sherwood Sharks, and they're so tiny, from 1988 where they won the championship. And the thing that's so funny about it is that I looked at this picture, and folks, this was 31 years ago. And all but nine children in that picture could be picked the names up. So we, you know, if anybody knows the names of this. So I would like Ms. Amy Sanders to come forward. And we actually want to give you, I'm so glad to clean out my closet.
It was in the corner and it's a very deep closet and I think I will use it. But, um, this is the Sherwood Sharks, perfect from 1988, Sherwood Sharks, first class, and soon as possible to get to the championship first. It has a very important, with a letter. And Bobby Carter, resident, president, it's mother with different, here we go again. And Bobby Carter is a very important coach.